Good evening. I'm Corvallis Advocate Moderator Kara Nixon and co-moderating with me tonight is publisher Steve Schultz. Welcome to tonight's City Speak Forum. City Speak Forums are co-presented by the Corvallis Advocate and the City Club of Corvallis. Offering online daily news and City Speak Forums, The Advocate during non-pandemic times also offers a twice monthly deep dive print publication. Our co-presenter, City Club of Corvallis, is a volunteer-run nonprofit organization that seeks to present a diversity of viewpoints and constructive dialogue. Tonight, within May 18th election day fast approaching, we'll conduct a public forum on Measure 2130, which would renew the current levy for Public Health and Safety Services. Then at 6:30, we'll move to Corvallis' Public School Board Candidates Debate. These debates are part of The Advocate's endorsement process. Tonight's questions will be a mix from The Advocate Editorial Board and our viewers. To ask a question, viewers can comment on the event's live post on The Advocate's Facebook page or email us at citiespeak@corvallisadvocate.com. Again, that's citiespeak@corvallisadvocate.com. Steve?
Okay, I'm a pro at this. Really, I am. Sorry about that. Thank you, Kara. Partial funding for these forums comes from Peak Sports and First Alternative Natural Foods Co-op. However, we could not present City Speak without support from viewers like you. Please consider a subscription. Visit our site. There are levels at $5 or $10. And donations over and above are, of course, welcome. Folks, locally-run news outlets like The Advocate have become rare. Community members willing to sustain them are also rare. We are grateful for all of our current subscribers and donors, so thank you. And if you aren't a subscriber yet, please consider joining the group of people that are. Kara?
Thanks, Steve. Every five years Benton County voters decide on continuing their present levels of Public Health and Safety Services through a local option levy. This year it will be on ballots as Measure 2130. If passed, voters would continue funding at $90 yearly per $100,000 of assessed property value. This evening, Benton County Board of Commissioners Chair Zan Ojero and Benton County Sheriff Jeff Van Arsdale field questions on this year's renewal. Again, as mentioned earlier, at 6:30, we'll move to the Board of Education Candidates Debate. But for now, I'm going to start with Commissioner Ojero. And then for sake of clarity for viewers, yes or no, would the current rate of assessment increase if this renewal passes?
No.
Okay. And then can you let viewers know how many times voters have affirmed the current rate of assessment?
In its current form, this levy has been before the voters since 2007, so... That's one, two, three, three times so far. And this would be the fourth if it's approved.
Okay. And what does this local option levy cover? And to expand on that, about what percentage goes to health services and what percentage to law enforcement?
This local option levy has, what it's covered primarily is corrections component, jail beds, because our current jail is far too small, so it's out-of-county rentals, 24/7 sheriff's patrol around the county, public health, both epidemiology and public health nursing. It's also covering deputy DAs in the district attorney's office to prosecute crime. It covers staff in the juvenile department office. And overall, the component that has been dedicated to law enforcement, per se, has been over 50% historically. And if you add in the juvenile and the DA's, the deputy DA, it comes up to about 65% of the total. Moving forward, we're planning on spending the money a little bit differently in enriching greatly the component that goes to crisis mental health, both crisis law enforcement, mental health crisis co-response with mental health workers and law enforcement, and the funding for the staffing of a crisis respite center, as well as mental health workers in the schools.
Great. And then in the coming years, even with the current assessment rate staying the same, does it appear increasing assessed property values will increase what the county can budget for?
Yes, indeed. That's a correct statement. Part of the reason we are able to enrich all of our crisis mental health response and the mental health component of the levy is because of that increase in property values around the county.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Ojero. We'll now be moving to Sheriff Van Arsdale. So could you let us know what happens if the levy doesn't pass? Would you need to cut current services? And if so, what cuts would you envision?
Currently, if the levy does not pass, in my office, I'd be looking at essentially cutting just over 20 positions. As a result of that 20-position cut, we would lose 24-hour service in the county. We've done that before, and we really don't want to do that again. We would lose the jail beds. We'd lose the 40 beds that we currently have spoken for at Norcore. So that would then in turn require us to make some changes internally at our own facility.
Okay, thank you. And then has the number of personnel at your department come to pace with the county's population growth? And are you able to project if your current anticipated revenues will allow the sheriff's department to meet future demands based on population growth?
Our sheriff's office, and I actually have that number here, but we have increased to 88 sworn staff in the office. That has kind of gone up from 77, I believe it was, the second time this has passed. So the staffing levels have gone up, but they haven't gone up dramatically. And I think it has matched the growth in the county.
Okay. And then police training has become a social question, as of late as we know. So do you believe your department may be seeking to allocate more resources into training over the next few years?
Oh, absolutely. There's stuff, there's some things currently in the legislature that are going to require some increased training hours. But DPSST, the body that governs law enforcement in Oregon, already has some pretty stringent rules in place for our training. And we have a lot of demand on just required training that we have to participate in. And then, and what was the second part? I apologize.
It's just that do you believe your department may be seeking to allocate more resources into training over the next few years?
Absolutely. I've been meeting with Daniel, I've met with Daniel Brown. Daniel Brown's starting a project with CPD currently in the city that we hope to expand into the county as part of a mental health response team that is related to this, which I think benefits our entire community across, you know, Corvallis, Monroe, Blodgett. It's a benefit to the entire community.
Okay, thank you for answering those questions. We're now going to be moving to viewer and board questions. Steve?
Zan, COVID will be at, so here's the way the question reads. COVID will be affecting our economy for at least the next few years. Can't the county try to at least reduce what it's asking for, at least for the time being?
That's a very good question. And we know that in the aggregate, the economy is actually faring quite well, and incomes are up. Income tax revenues are up at the state level. But we know that people are hurting on an individual household basis, and not everyone is doing equally well. So we are going to be heading into our budgeting process. We will begin on Monday night, and we will be taking a hard look at the numbers to see whether or not there's any room for reducing the tax rate. I would encourage anyone that's interested in that question to participate in the county budget process.
Okay, the next question will go to Jeff. Couldn't we save on policing and jailing if we spent more on mental health workers and increasing aid to people in need?
Well, unfortunately, I think the two go hand in hand. And so projects like what Danielle has proposed, where we can have a dual response team. I can tell you recently here in the county, we had an individual that we've been dealing with. I started with Corvallis Police in 19, and we've been dealing with this individual in 1997. Our office responded. We quickly recognized that this was, you know, a gentleman in mental health crime. We coordinated with the mental health department. They actually responded, and the gentleman got the services he needs. So fortunately, a lot of times they go hand in hand. And if we can start figuring out what that's going to look like and build a system in Benton County that's going to work for this community, until we figure what that looks like right now, I think we have to live within the constraints that we have.
I think what the questioner is driving at, and I'm now reading into it a bit, but I think what they mean is rather than funding so much in terms of policing, wouldn't it be valuable perhaps to spend more, say, in adolescents? Where, in other words, wouldn't it be better to beef up the mental health department and frankly, for lack of a better way of putting it, and again, I'm not in the questioner's mind, frankly, not defund policing, but defund it partially and put more money into mental health, probably in early childhood or adolescents? And again, I'm trying to read into it best I can.
Right. No, I don't disagree that there needs to be funding in that arena. But I think that it needs, we need to take a cautious approach when we do that, because of course there are going to be downstream ramifications if there are less law enforcement personnel on the roads. Like I say, if we found ourselves in 2007 status where we didn't have 24/7 patrol, I think that you would see an increase in crime in the county, because folks just know we wouldn't be there. So I think it's a balancing act. But I do get the questioner's basis for the question. I think it is something important that we need to have a dialogue about. But I think currently, we need to make sure we take a tempered and educated response to how we do spend our monies. I agree with that.
Okay, and Zan, you'd wanted to add something to that, I think?
Yes, I would love to add to that. Prior, in the last few years, we've been looking intensely at our criminal justice system here in Benton County. And we conducted a criminal justice systems assessment from, you know, from the street and first encounter with law enforcement all the way through to release into the community. And what we came up with, looking at our own system and at best practices around the country, was that you have to have that balance of accountability and treatment. And all of us want someone that enters into the system to come out as a more higher-functioning community member than when they went into the system. And that's not what's happening now. So that's what we really would like to change with these investments in our mental health, crisis mental health system and addressing issues of homelessness, et cetera. We know that there are a lot of issues there. I would say that our baseline sheriff's office staffing is pretty minimal. We have three cars on patrol most of the time around the entire county. That's not a lot of coverage. So we're not overspending in that arena. But what we are trying to do is enrich the services that are preventive in nature and really get out to those social determinants of health and criminality that cause us to be reactive and to spend a heck of a lot more money as a result, whether it's in a jail or in the emergency department.
So, you know, Zan, I'll follow up. It is the case, from my understanding, that while the rate of assessment has not increased, we are, because of the increased property values, there's going to be some benefit to the community in terms of increased expenditure in health, public health. Is that the case?
That is true. We will be spending, we won't be increasing what we're spending on public health as we have framed this measure, but we will be spending more on mental health in the schools, the crisis response, and crisis respite.
And then just rough percentages, how much of the levy is going to enforcement? How much is going to public health or mental health? I don't know if it's even fair to ask yet. I don't know if you know.
Well, we do have those prospective numbers. We did put those together. And looking forward, on average, over the next five-year levy, if it's approved by the voters, starting in 2023, we will be spending about 44% of the funding on law enforcement, both in terms of custody and patrol. And we'll be spending 15% on health in all forms, about 6% on the district attorney's office, and 5% on the juvenile department. There's contingency and pre-trial services as well. They're smaller proportions. The juvenile department's a good example. Our juvenile department has a mental health counselor embedded in the department, and our juvenile department staff do work with all of the rural schools on a preventive basis. So we are doing some of that upstream work. None of us want to have our youth end up on a path where they end up with justice involved.
Did you have anything to add to that response, Jeff?
No, Commissioner did touch on the crisis respite center and things like that. Those are important. Those are going to become very important to our overall system, because it's going to, again, give us an option versus just straight incarceration. Folks that need those resources will have access to those resources.
Okay, and then, you know, and this one, I'm not even going to attempt to characterize it. If voters say no, will you come back with another proposal next election? And how would you change what you're proposing? I'm going to let either of you answer that that would like to.
Yes, we'll come back again. And I can't tell you at this point exactly how we might modify a proposed local option levy. If this one were to fail, we would probably seek more community input before we would modify any proposed measure.
Okay. And then Jeff, do you have anything to add to that? Sure.
The only thing I can say is I have worked here when the sheriff's office did not provide 24-hour service, and it was messy. And so the prospect of that scares me.
When you say messy, could you give me an example or two?
Sure. As a Corvallis police officer, I can remember responding to calls for service in the county, because deputies would be called out in the middle of the night. So they'd have an on-call process, and the deputy would be called out from home and then have to respond. And depending on where they'd have to respond to, that could be some time before an actual deputy responded to that location to conduct the investigation.
What kind of calls?
You name it, whether it's a business alarm, a traffic crash, a domestic assault, anything like that. At 2 o'clock, there was no law enforcement in the county.
And what kind of response times are we talking about?
It just depends on what kind of on-call system we come up with. I don't know what that would look like now. I can't forecast that. But regardless, you have to get up, you have to get dressed, you have to get in your car, and you have to respond. And so it's not a quick response by any means.
Okay. And then, Zan, I'll move back to you. There's been a number of questions about how this levy impacts the justice levy that is apparently contemplated for, I believe. When is the justice levy contemplated to hit the ballot?
The, what we are contemplating is a bond measure to support the facilities component of justice systems improvement. And that would be a year from now.
Okay. So, and then any idea of what that's going to cost per thousand assessed value?
I can't tell you that right now, but what I can tell you is that we're going to be beginning a three-month-long community engagement process to discuss all of the options and the price points, and hoping to then take all of that information from that extensive community engagement to put together a proposal next fall.
Any sense of the range, though?
Off the top of my head, I'm not going to venture that, no.
Okay. And then the other question that, of course, comes up, and you know, I know the answer, because we've talked about this. But, you know, assuming that the measure were to pass next year, we are, this measure would permit for continued jail bed rental, 40 beds. Do we really still need that component of this measure should the levy, or rather, the bond measure pass next year?
If you can build a jail within a year, no, but that is never going to happen. So basically, the timing of this local option levy, beginning in 2023, July 1, would carry us through five years to when we would anticipate that a new facility would be up and operational. And so, and we're still going to need operations funds for any facility that we have. It's not as if having a new jail will automatically eliminate all of the expense. So those are numbers that we are actively crunching. I know Sheriff Van Arsdale is working on that along with our consultants at DLR, because they have worked with many, many, many other localities and have a very good sense of the operating costs associated with different types of facilities.
And then, you know, I'll move to the sheriff. Anything else you would like voters to know about this measure?
Well, I guess for me, it would just simply be that, you know, this is our community. We all live here. We all work here, to include the deputies in this office. And as you and I discussed, you know, when we are off-duty, we pass each other in the stores. We are downtown. We frequent all the businesses in the community. And so this impacts everybody, you, myself, the commissioner. Everybody's impacted by this. And all I can say is I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve here. I'm grateful for the opportunity to kind of be the keeper of this budget for this office. And I look forward to continuing to grow this office and have it look like what this community wants it to look like. And so we do that by passing this levy, of course, and then moving to the future and expanding it and getting more involved with the health department, with mental health, and just seeing what we can do to be on the forefront of the justice system.
And then, you know, I guess, same question for you, Zan, if you would.
I'm sorry. I got so involved in listening to Jeff that I would love to have you repeat the question.
You know, before I even ask you that, I'm going to be asking you in a moment what it is, what else you would like voters to know about this measure. But just so I have a sense of it, you may not know this off the cuff. I don't know if you will. It's almost not fair to ask, but do you know how many other counties in Oregon have a similar local option levy?
That's homework I should have done.
Well, and I can't blame you, because it only just occurred to me now to ask.
But I do know that many counties do. It's not unusual at all. Given the fact that we have property tax limitation in place and that no county can increase their permanent tax rate, it has become essential. And so as far as I'm aware, a large proportion of other counties do have local option levies that support some element of their services. And for all of us, law enforcement is the most expensive element of what, of the core services that a county provides.
An estimate is at least a third of counties in Oregon, potentially.
I would say that's probably accurate, but I can definitely look that up and provide more definitive information. Sheriff, you might have a better sense for that.
Well, I can certainly reach out to the other 35 sheriffs, and I mean, I can get you an answer to that pretty quickly.
Okay. And then what else would you want voters, Zan, what else would you want voters to know?
I want voters to know that we take all of their opinions very seriously and that we know that we have to address causes for crime. So we are investing in those areas through health, mental health, and addressing homelessness, substance use disorders. And also that we have to hold people accountable as well. And so we're looking for balance. And our doors are always open in terms of taking input about what that balance looks like. And we know that we have to be as frugal as we can in pursuing the best possible system.
Okay. And so that viewers know, in six minutes, we will start our school board debate. I want to thank Sheriff Van Arsdale and Zan Ojero for appearing this evening at City Speak. And that concludes this portion. And we will be resuming in about five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back, everyone. We're now going to move to this evening's candidates debate for the Welcome back, everyone. But this year, all the positions are contested. So we're going to be starting in reverse order with position six incumbent Vince Adams versus challenger Tim US. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Adams. So you've shifted from seeking another four years in position four to seeking the two unexpired years in position six. So firstly, what's motivating your seeking reelection? And what do you hope to accomplish on the board in the next two years? And why are you seeking the shorter term? Two minutes, please.
Great. Thanks for the question. And first, I'd like to say thanks to the advocate and city club for having this forum. And it's good to see Tim US and get to see his face in real life. So I'm running for, for the school board again because my passion for it hasn't changed. The reason hasn't changed. Back in 2013, when I reflected, when I was recruited to be on the board, I thought about my public school experience and how it impacted me. And I had an educator that had faith in me and it has changed my life. I grew up poor in a little timber town and my highest aspiration back in high school is to be a choker setter. And now I get to work for Oregon School Boards Association, teaching school boards all over Oregon. And I have a master's degree in, in public policy. You know, there's a lot to celebrate about what we've been doing. I think the biggest thing that we need to celebrate is the, the rise in the graduation rate. Back in 2011, we were graduating, you know, less than two thirds of our kids. Today it's 90%. We've adopted policies that have made our schools more inclusive. And as a board member, I've been an advocate for, for, for children, particularly homeless children and their families, and also advocating at the state level for funding. So the things that I want to, you know, top priority for, for, you know, the next few years is getting kids back in school and stable. I mean, we know that the pandemic has had a tremendous impact on, on our schools. And so making sure that we can safely have kids in schools is top priority. The next is just really continuing the work that we've been doing, closing the opportunity gap for kids is really top priority there. And then just bringing the, the, this is really a pet project for me is, you know, bringing the community into our policy process. When I first got on the school board, I partnered with a couple of parents to adopt a policy, but there was no roadmap for that. And so I've been working over the last couple of years with the superintendent with the board to bring our community into our policy process. So that's what I, I'd like to get done in the next couple of years. Thanks for the question.
Great, thank you. And then moving on to Mr. US, what's motivating your choice to run? And what would you like to accomplish in the next two years? Two minutes.
Great. Thanks for having me on here as well. It's good to see Vince's face, his beard. I've seen it all over town. And it cracks me up because my little brother is also kind of a redhead. So our parents, our great grandparents probably immigrated to this country together at some point. So what motivates me? It's a great question. Much like Vince grew up in a single, you know, my dad was the only worker in our family. So we weren't the most well-to-do family in town, grew up in Eugene, was blessed with some excellent teachers at the public schools down in the 4J district and went through Crest Drive Elementary. At that point, it was Jefferson Institute of Multicultural International Education and Technology and then Churchill High School. Mrs. Barnum taught me how to write. Mr. O'Shea taught me science. Mr. Cataldo taught me math and I owe a ton to them in that regard. But when I started getting into this COVID education and, and the world changed for us dramatically last spring, I started looking at the, just the tribalism, the polarization of everything and really started digging into the math. And it became very concerning to me that about half of our kids are not performing where I believe they should be performing in the Corvallis School District. And a third of the kids are not reading at the level I believe they should be reading at. And trying to understand why that is and how we can put better systems or more accountability in place for that. So I'm passionate about the children in the community. That's why I've done a ton of volunteer work with kids coaching, with, with Kwanzaa Sunrisers, making sure that educational opportunities are available. And that's really the, the passion I bring to it. What I'd like to see, I think we have to post-COVID reimagine a little bit what education looks like and, and see what systems have, have really worked well in this current COVID environment and what systems we need to kind of throw in the trash can and reimagine a little bit. And so that every kid in our community has a chance to be in AP Physics, in AP Biology, in AP Calculus, just like I had those opportunities growing up down in Eugene. So that's the passion I bring to it.
Thank you. All right. We're now going to be moving on to viewer and board questions from Steve.
Thank you, Kara. I'll start with Mr. US and these are going to be really as quick as you can, a minute max answers. It's impossible to anticipate the course, and these are a lot of questions are from the board and a lot of them are from viewers. It's impossible to anticipate the course of the pandemic for September, but as the new school year approaches, what would you prioritize in your decision-making? In terms of reopening and in-person versus, versus remote learning? Mr. US?
Yeah, great question. I'll try to be brief on it. I think that, again, it's part of that reimagining for my youngest son. Doing the Florida online program has been amazing for him and having the ability to do Lexia and partner with my wife at home on that with Ms. Baumgartner. It's been an amazing journey for him. But for many of the kids, I believe we need to get them back in school and have a path for full and time learning, just as it's going to start next week. I think that's really important. The second piece of that is I believe each child meets testing. And I was actually very disappointed. I received an email saying we may not do some of the standardized testing. Because we need to know where each student is at so we can have a plan to fill in the gaps that may have occurred during the COVID school year.
Vince, same question?
Yeah, I mean priorities. The first priority is making sure that our schools are safe for our, for our students and for our educators. That's always been our top priority. You know, and at every step, the school board and myself have been, you know, very clear about our expectations that we wanted kids in school if it was possible. And at every step, when policy allowed us to do that, we've moved closer to that. And just like Tim said, we're, we're putting kids back in schools because we can. You know, the other priority is, you know, addressing that unfinished instruction and, you know, you know, assessment is happening right now. I can tell you right now that teachers are working very hard to figure out exactly where kids at. And you know what? Frankly, assessment has been happening all through the school year. And so even though the, the district may be considering not doing high stakes testing that is really stressful and takes time away from instruction, I can tell you for sure that our teachers, our educators are definitely doing assessment and that's going to feed into our decision-making on, on programming for next year, but
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Aside from the pandemic, should, I'm going to go ahead with Mr. US first on this. Aside from the pandemic, should Oregon law, as some lawmakers have proposed, be changed to exclude religious and philosophical exemptions to district vaccine requirements? Mr. US?
Are you saying should our children be required to have a COVID vaccine to go back to school? I just want to clarify.
I would think that that, I would think that that is probably the inference, but further, there are currently religious and philosophical exemptions available for families who would prefer to not have their children vaccinated. Could you give me about 30 seconds on that?
Yeah, so I, I would agree that there should be exemptions for those people, just like there are current exemptions. And we've seen even through the pandemic, a Netflix special starring an individual out of Lebanon, Oregon that was very passionate as a non-Baxter. But more importantly, I would leave it up to the healthcare professionals for my children. I will talk to my pediatrician. I saw today that emergency use was granted and I will talk to our healthcare professional if it's the right thing for our children.
So in other words, each family make up their own mind?
I would absolutely agree with that.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, on this one, you're not going to see a lot of daylight between Tim and myself. I think that the current statute is, is working. If school districts or communities are focused on ensuring herd immunity, they can get there. And so, I mean, we got to follow statute first and foremost. If they change the statute, that's a different, that's a different issue.
So in rough terms, keep the law as is?
Yeah, depending on what the local health authority says, yes.
Okay, so both of you keep law as is. Got it. Okay. And then I'm going to move to the next question. Mr. US first. A lot of controversy nationally about trans students and sports teams. So, trans girls on girls' teams, trans boys on boys' teams, for or against?
Well, that's a great question. And I've actually reached out to Mary Ann Bedra, who was in charge of Title Line at Oregon State to gain her perspective on it. She thought that that is, it's a good thing as long as there are, you know, the NCAA or Olympic standards in place when it comes to some of the testosterone blockers and those types of things. And so, well, personally, I would find it, you know, difficult if, I, I just look at a woman playing on my football team, the precautions we may have to take when it comes to locker room, some of those types of things, those are hurdles that we could jump through if, if an individual transitioning wanted to participate in football. We would just have to figure out what that looks like and what's appropriate for the entire team based on law. It's not my, it's not my choice. It's what the law says to do.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, Tim's right. The law is clear and so is our, our district policy. You treat, you treat a student the way that they identify. So, and you make accommodations as needed.
Great. Okay.
And then it's been tested in case law as well.
Mr. US, what if any relationship should the school district have with police?
Well, that's an interesting one for you to ask me because my father-in-law was the one that started the police program in Eugene, retired as a sergeant down there. Was actually the police officer at my high school, Churchill. Having been involved in the Eugene School District during the Thurston shootings, I thought it was a great idea to start getting police on school campuses for student safety. Absolutely supportive. And I know Evan Hall was at Corvallis High and I know him well. And I believe he was building relationships that are valuable to have with the students in the community.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, Evan Hall and Karen Stotter before him did really good work in our schools. Ultimately, this, this is an operational decision. The school board appropriately handed this to the superintendent. There was a collaborative process where the community came in and worked and the superintendent worked with the chief of police to come up with a solution. It turned out that we weren't going to have school resource officers in schools. But ultimately, it's the job of the school board to place the expectation that schools are safe. And the superintendent is doing that. So that box is checked.
Okay. And then what if, what do you think that children can be learning from the BLM movement? Vince, I'm going to start with you in this instance.
I think the big thing to take away from Black Lives Matter is it's the voice of many generations of hurt being expressed. I think that often people in the dominant culture don't realize how much cultural harm is done and how much harm people carry with them. So I think that's the first thing is that Black Lives Matter is a cry for justice. And I think that's the first and foremost thing we need to take.
Okay, great. And Mr. US, what are you hoping that students take away from the BLM movement?
Yeah, it's a great question. And in my perspective is the only way out of this is through awareness and relationships. And so that's why I encourage conversations with people that don't look like you. And that's why in June, when things became very heated in our community, I engaged with people in our community that didn't look like me to ask them questions, ask them what their experience was. Well, I've had many teammates that didn't look like me over the years. I, I felt like I need to ask a few more questions and then listen. And so I think that's what comes out of this is a becoming a better listener and then moving towards action that's appropriate.
Mr. US, so just by way of background for our viewers that may not know, you have some history in professional football. When you refer to teammates, I'm assuming that's what you mean.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, good. Yeah, appreciate it. Okay. And then so that I'm aware of it, Mr. Adams, are you kind of running allied with any other group of candidates in some way?
I mean, it's no secret that, that I'm running with, with my board chair, Sammy Abdurba, Mike Colley on the board, LaHui White Bear and a recent applicant to be appointed to the board, Sean Tomany, and they're on the call today. Yeah, we're definitely coordinating our, our, our efforts. We're very aligned in our, in our values. It doesn't mean we don't have disagreements. It just means that we're
Right, got it. Okay. And then same question for you, Mr. US?
Yeah, I, I was recruited to run along with Dr. Bryce Clary, with Richard Arnold and with Ginger Shute-Larcom. And so the four of us are very tight with our alignment and what we believe.
Okay, got it. Okay. And then, you know, I want to kind of move to what you have in, Mr. US, I want to kind of move to what you have in your voters pamphlet statement. You say, you say that you want to advocate that all students be taught the fundamental skills, putting all in caps. What are you seeking to convey there? Do you believe that not all students are, that some students are being short-changed in some way? How would you address some of that during your term? I need just about a minute on that.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think when I put all in caps, I want to be inclusive of all the children in the district. My children have been at Lincoln, Linus Pauline. My daughter's in eighth grader on the track to Corvallis High. I, we did transfer one child to Franklin and then we did the Florida online program. We want to make sure there's programs for all children to learn reading, writing, math and civics. I think that's very important. And it doesn't matter what your socioeconomic status is, what's your race, religion, creed.
Do you believe some students are being changed by the district currently?
I do believe that there are some children that are in a tough position when it comes to things like diagnosing dyslexia, like my son, where he was not far enough behind that we had to then go and seek out professional opinions that cost money, that some families may not have those resources. And I, I really want to try to help catch and fill in those cracks of the K through third graders before they fall behind in reading.
Mr. Adams, I'm going to ask you to respond to Mr. US.
Yeah, I mean, the, the reality is the, the data shows us and we know that the education system in the United States doesn't serve all kids equitably. We know that. But, you know, the proof is in the data as well is that we've reached parity with, with our Hispanic students in graduation rates. So where we place our focus, where we place our attention, we can make progress. And over the last, you know, really 10 years, we've shown that. We've shown that we can make progress. And, you know, Tim's exactly right. You know, our kids with disabilities are lagging behind. So are our kids that are navigating poverty. We need to, you know, place extra attention in those areas because we've already had success with some of our kids of color.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. And then I'm going to ask you a question that is also from your voters pamphlet statement. I'm going to be giving Mr. US a chance to respond to your answer. You state the jobs of the future will require a tech savvy workforce that can learn quickly and think critically. Can you just expand on that statement a little bit and what you would do in the next two years to help students prepare?
Already doing the things to make that happen. You know what I'm alluding to are 20th, 21st century learning skills. Is that the, the skills of tomorrow, the jobs of tomorrow require kids to be more creative, be able to work collaboratively, to be effective communicators. And as we have learned over this last year, to be very tech savvy. You know, that's one of the things about this pandemic is that learning has happened. It's just not learning that fits nicely into standardized tests. And so that's exactly down the pipeline of where we're headed. You know, CT, career and technical education, sorry, is another area where we're, that we're leveraging to build these 21st century learning skills so kids can be ready for the, the jobs of tomorrow, really the jobs of today.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. With that, I want to thank both of you for appearing at City Speak, sitting here and taking what are sometimes tough questions and getting grilled, I know is not easy. I appreciate your willingness to participate in this process with our viewers and with us. Thank you. And Kara?
Thanks, Steve. We're now going to be moving on to position five. The contestants include Shawna Tomany and Rochelle Spindler. Ginger Shute-Larcom is also running, though she declined to participate this evening. So we'll be starting with Ms. Tomany. So could you tell us what's motivating your choice to run and what you're hoping to accomplish if you're elected? Two, two minutes. Two minutes, please.
Thank you, Kara. My name is Shawna Tominey. I'm a parent in the district, and I'm a Corvallis K-12 graduate. Growing up in Corvallis schools, what I remember most were the amazing teachers that I had. As a white and Asian-American student, it was hard to find myself reflected in my education, but I had teachers who saw and encouraged me, reached out when they saw me struggling, and inspired me to want to do the same for others, which is why, in large part, I've dedicated my career to the social and emotional well-being of children, youth, families, and educators. I've worked in educational systems around the country to learn from the successes and struggles of other districts, and I would love to bring that learning home. The pandemic isn't what brought me to the table, but I will talk about that as being one of the most pressing issues in the next year. I actually, as Vince alluded to, put my name forward two years ago when the board was looking to select a new director, and I wasn't selected at that time. But I couldn't have been more grateful to be able to learn from Dr. White Bear's leadership, who was chosen, and to have more time to learn about the roles and responsibilities of what it really meant to be a school board member, and to learn more about the relationships between the current school board, educators, and families in the district, so I could identify places where I could come to the table and help fill those gaps. So in terms of next year, like many families, mine has had struggles as well. It has been heartbreaking as a parent to see my daughter say that she hates school for the first time in her life, to have trouble getting up in the morning to log on, struggling to engage, and experiencing social isolation. So the pandemic didn't bring me to the table, but it strengthened my resolve to show up for Corvallis students and families towards supporting pandemic recovery in the coming year.
Thank you, Ms. Tominey. We'll now be moving on to Ms. Spindler. So could you let the audience know what's motivating your choice to run and what you're hoping to accomplish if elected? Two minutes, please. You're muted, sorry.
Of course, there had to be one "I'm muted" tonight, so you're welcome, everyone. Okay. So I'm Rochelle Spindler, and I'm running for school board position number five. I want to thank the City Club of Corvallis and the Corvallis Advocate for having us all here tonight. I'd like to take a minute to introduce myself. I was born and raised in the San Francisco Bay Area, and I'm the first generation American in my family. My parents instilled in me the importance of public education and community service. In my culture, it's important to give back to the community who supports you. And since I moved to Corvallis 15 years ago, this community and its public schools has done so much for my family. I would really appreciate the opportunity now to give back all to you by serving on the Corvallis School Board. I'm running against two really first-rate candidates, but here's why I'm the best choice for position number five and what I hope to accomplish over the next four years. First off, we're in pandemic recovery, and as a crisis mental health first responder, I know how to protect and to be vigilant of the mental health needs of our students. For the past year, I have directly responded to schools, children, and families in our surrounding community experiencing stress related to the return to in-person learning. I feel a strong board has diverse members, and I currently, we don't have a board member with mental health experience. I will fill that void. I was not recruited for this position, I volunteered. Second, as we bounce back from the pandemic, I want to be your public servant on behalf of improving graduation rates and making academic success achievable for all of our students. Our students' academics has suffered this past year, and we need a strong focus on bringing our kids back up to speed in their education. Even before becoming a parent, I supported the most vulnerable youth in our community and advocated for their needs. As a school board member, I will do the same for your kids. I look forward to sharing more with you this evening, and thanks for your vote.
Thank you for answering those preliminary questions. We're now going to be moving on to viewer and board questions from Steve.
Thank you, Kara. I'll start with Ms. Tominey. So fast forward, it's going to be September. No way to anticipate what's going to be going on with the pandemic. What factors will you prioritize in decision-making about learning in person versus hybrid versus remote?
Thank you for the question, Steve, and I also just want to say hi to Rochelle, who I have been looking forward to meeting in person. So it's so nice to finally be in the same, at least Zoom space. In terms of prioritizing, one of the areas that I think is a critical priority for pandemic recovery is strengthening the relationship between the school district and families, and bringing family voice to the table, not just to the traditional table of saying, "Come to a school board meeting to express yourself or answer a quick survey," but really looking at how we break down barriers to see what's been working over the past year in terms of in-person learning as we transition back, I know in our own schools, we're transitioning back next week, nearly full-time. What's been working well across in-person models, hybrid models, and the Corvallis online models? What's been working for whom? And also looking to find families and students who have fallen through the cracks entirely this year. And so, in terms of priorities, strengthening those relationships with families and looking at family needs, and then really looking at where the inequities are falling. You know, as changes and transitions are being made over time that are changing schedules from week to week, what families are able to manage that? How much time do we need to really be trauma-informed to make sure that they can effectively meet those schedules? So I think-
Thank you, Ms. Spindler.
So, as we, over the next couple months, including in September, where if we don't go back to all-person learning, if we don't learn how to coexist with this COVID-19, then there's going to be a lot of fatigue going on. And personally, I have been responding to the mental health crisis.
Ms. Spindler, I think you have frozen. Kara.
And let's keep our kids in school, and let's focus on the mental health and make sure that they're supported so that everybody is safe and protected moving forward.
Okay, thank you for that answer. So, same questions, obviously, we're doing this with each race other than the voters pamphlet statements. So, you know, I'll start this time with you, Ms. Spindler. Right now, Oregon law permits exemptions for religious or philosophical beliefs in terms of exemptions to vaccinations for students. Is that something you're supportive of? Lawmakers have talked about doing away with those exemptions.
Well, we're a public school, so we have to maintain that everybody has their own exceptions. And I think it would be contraindicated to the public school philosophy if we actually said, "No, you can't have that religious exemption." That doesn't make sense to me. I think that-
I think I've got the answer, so thank you. And then, Ms. Tominey.
Thank you. So I think in addition, I share some of the same beliefs that Rochelle shared as well. But in addition, I think that there are ways to bridge gaps in terms of keeping everybody safe. If there are families, there are also families who have children with chronic illness or other conditions who may not be able to get a vaccine, even if they want to. And so ensuring that there are ways to bring children safely back into the, into schools in ways that keep them as well as-
This questioner is really not dealing with medical exemption, just philosophical and religious?
Thank you for clarifying. At this point, I would follow what the laws are stating, but also look for how we can be continually inclusive while keeping everybody safe.
Okay, and so, if there were a legislation in Salem to do away with the exemptions, would you find yourself supportive of doing away with them or keeping them?
I'd want to listen really deeply to what the community is saying in terms of where the concerns are.
Okay, and Ms. Spindler, would you be in support of keeping them or doing away with them?
I would keep the exemptions because I think that is most inclusive of all of our students.
Thank you for the straightforwardness on those answers, both of you. What relationship, if any, should schools have with police? I'll start with you, Ms. Tominey.
Thank you. My husband was actually sworn in as a deputy this week, so for Benton County. So we have a strong relationship with law enforcement here at home. But I think that this is a time for community building. Community building between schools, between public safety officers and law enforcement, while also recognizing some of the traumas that individuals and groups have had associated with gun violence, associated with law enforcement, and associated with news in the media. And those traumas have existed sometimes for generations. And so understanding, I think that we can understand both. Both looking at the importance of movements like Black Lives Matter and listening deeply to understand the traumas that individuals and communities have held, while also looking at how we build and rebuild relationships with law enforcement to bridge some of those gaps. So I think-
And then, I think I've kind of got it, and then, Ms. Spindler?
Well, as a crisis response team member, I actually go out on crisis calls in the community with police a lot. And I can tell you right now, this is an awesome opportunity for police to regain the trust of the school districts and to integrate themselves into the school districts and to rebuild that relationship. So I hope they take advantage of that.
Okay, and you know, I'll just ask you kind of off cuff, I'm going to expand on this listener question. Personally, take a little prerogative. Let's say we're having a high school career day. Include booth for police, yes or no? Just a yes or no, Ms. Tominey?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Spindler?
Yes, non-uniformed.
Thank you. Non-uniformed or uniformed, Ms. Tominey?
I would say uniformed, but also with letting families know who's going to be present. So if there are traumas that have been experienced, families can prepare themselves.
I appreciate the answer, both of you straightforward, really appreciate it. What would you say that you would hope for district students to learn from the BLM movement? I'll start with you, Ms. Spindler.
I hope that they realize that they can lift their voice together as a community if there is something that needs changing or is unjust. I, I hope that that is what we give the next generation, that they don't do what we did in our generation, and that they can make the world a better place themselves.
Ms. Tominey?
I love that answer. That was a place where I think we were very aligned. I would also add that the importance of listening deeply to understanding one another's stories, to realizing that everyone's experience is just as important to them as yours is to you, and building compassion and community healing through togetherness.
Okay, and then, I do know that some of the candidates are running aligned together. And, you know, Ms. Tominey, I'll just ask frankly, are you similarly stating that you were aligned with Mr. Adams, Sammy, and, and Dr. White Bear?
Yes, I am. I was invited to run alongside them in this election, essentially. We are, we are working together in terms of connecting around shared values, focus on equity.
Right, okay. And then, Ms. Spindler, are you aligned in any such way with any of the other candidates running?
No, I'm not. I'm actually the only candidate that was not recruited by any person that was running. And I'm also the only one that has identified myself as a public servant, which I found kind of shocking when I went in. Everybody else identified themselves as a public figure or a political person.
Okay, thank you. Let me go ahead and move over to the voters pamphlets questions. I'll start with you, Ms. Spindler. Your statement reads, "You'll amplify the voices of parents in marginalized communities and those with children identified as special needs." Do you believe the district isn't doing that now? And how would you address your concerns during your term?
I believe the district could use a little more help with that. An example of that would be our Cohort C right now, that's kind of not getting a lot of educational space. So I would definitely work towards soliciting them specifically to provide input to the board.
Thank you for your answer. And Ms. Tominey, do you have a response to Ms. Spindler's answer?
I would agree that additional support is needed for Cohort C. I'd also say that I've been hearing from families with children who have special needs, and neurodiversity and other needs, who feel like their needs have not been met in through hybrid or online settings, who need additional support and are looking for additional ways to be reflected in the district.
Great, thank you, Ms. Tominey. I'll now move to you, and then similarly, Ms. Spindler will have an opportunity to respond. Your voters pamphlet statement calls for dedicated investment in trauma-informed care to ensure students' well-being and to reduce staff burnout. How do you envision that? Are there programs you want to put into place to initiate towards these goals during your term, should you be elected?
Yeah, there are already many efforts in the district to provide professional development for educators and administrators at all levels around trauma-informed care, how we understand the impacts of trauma, the benefits of social and emotional learning and positive mental health supports. And those are efforts that I think absolutely need to not only continue, but expand. We have students who have experienced a global trauma this year, and there are needs that we can already anticipate and see coming out, but there are also those that we cannot, that we need to be prepared for.
I appreciate your answer, and I want to go ahead and give Ms. Spindler an opportunity to respond.
You know, I think this is where Dr. Tominey and I, our platforms are very similar in a lot of spaces, and we completely agree with this. I think to add on to Dr. Tominey's statement is that trauma-informed care, you know, since I am, since I train on this a lot, it's also in the nuances, like changing schedules all the time. It's not trauma-informed, especially not to parents that can't pivot. All these little nuances need to be considered, as well as the big global picture that she stated earlier.
You know, and I'll expand on this question just a little bit. There has been widespread discussion of the fairly continual schedule changes. Could you expand on that for just a moment? You know, I'm going to look for a response from Ms. Tominey, and then a final response from Ms. Spindler.
Challenging, because the information that I know the school board and district administrators have has changed over time. Guidelines have changed over time. COVID rates have changed over time, and I know that they are working hard to try and manage that as it comes, but it's also very challenging for families.
In retrospect, is there anything the district could have done potentially better?
Greater transparency, maybe along the way also looking at how to bring more family voice to the table. I know that families have been asked prospectively, "Which would you prefer, looking ahead?" But there have been so many lessons learned along the way that can inform what happens for the rest of the year, as well as in the fall, that may not be tapped into yet, that really need to be at the table.
Ms. Spindler, same question to you. What would you have done different?
You know, I have to tell you, changing schedules like that is a very privileged response, and I was a little shocked by it. To assume that families can just pivot and have that is very privileged to think that. A lot of families are unable to pivot that quickly, and a lot of families, we got one week to prepare for these changes. That is not a trauma-informed response, and that is not a privileged awareness response. So I was very disappointed by the school. The school had months to prepare for this. They were, I agreed, more transparency could definitely be helpful. The private sector had to do it. We just need to step up and meet the private sector with what they had to do.
I appreciate the straightforwardness from both of you. I appreciate your participation. I want to echo what I said to our last two candidates, that sitting here and getting grilled and putting yourself out there in that way, not an easy choice. So I very much appreciate you taking the time, and I know that our viewers do as well. Kara?
Thank you, Steve.
We're now going to move on to position four candidates. Those candidates are current position six incumbent Luhui White Bear versus challenger Richard Arnold. So I'm going to start with you, Dr. White Bear. What's motivating your choice to run and what are you hoping to accomplish if elected? Two minutes, please.
Aku, everyone, my name is Luhui White Bear. Use she/her pronouns, I am Coastal Schumash. And I am running because I believe in our community. We have experienced K-12 throughout history in a way that has not felt very good for a lot of folk, including myself and my children, many other children in this community. I believe that we're in a pivotal moment in our education system where we can create new futures together, and that's a big part of why I'm running. I want to help continue the amazing work that had been done before with the transgender policy, with our equity work that was started before I was on board, and I want to continue to move that forward. I also am running because the community called upon me to do this. I was asked to put my name in by community. As a member of the community, I really take that seriously. As a leader, I listen to the community, and if I'm asked to represent and be a voice, I want to help be that voice for our community. I know that I am going to be able to bring a perspective onto the board, bring it back to the board, a perspective that may not be there as well. And in the near future, I really want to continue the work, like I said, but I also want to take a look at some of the great work that's been done during the pandemic. I know that there's been a lot that has been hard. It's been challenging for my children, for so many other kids and students in the district as well. And I want to be able to- And I want to be able to highlight some of the great work that's been done, perhaps it was some of the reading programs like Stunnet Lincoln, and see what we can do to make that more accessible to other schools. I don't want us to lose the lessons that we have learned during the pandemic. I want us to continue to move forward to be able to address those inequities a little bit stronger that were further revealed during the pandemic. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then I'll move to you, Mr. Arnold. What's motivating your choice to run, and what are you hoping to accomplish if elected? Two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Richard Arnold. I'm running for position four for the Corvallis School Board. I've been a 15-year resident of Corvallis, three children that are either in or have been in the Corvallis School District that have gone through the gamut K through 12. I come from a family that believes very strongly in public service. During the course of my time living here in Corvallis, I've volunteered for the Corvallis School Board Budget Committee. I'm a current member of the Corvallis Bond Oversight Committee. I'm also a part of the City of Corvallis Budget Committee. What's motivating me to run for this position is essentially the, the quality of the education that our children are receiving. Having three children that have gone through the district, I have been able to watch specifically as, as the quality of the education each child is received has been declining, especially over the past five years. I've spoken a couple times at board meetings. I've tried bringing it up, but the, the board pretty much provides what I would describe as benign neglect when it comes to the educational quality that's currently being provided. This keyed me in. It started when I first saw that, you know, Corvallis was named the fifth best school district in the state, but being the fifth school, fifth best school district in the state meant that one-third of our kids can't read at grade level, and almost just over half can't, can't complete math at grade level. And I just found this, you know, quite infuriating. And then listening and watching as my child struggled the first, this first year in college, just pretty much solidified, I, I felt there was a need for me to finally step up and run and try and be a voice on the school board that would at least try and focus some of its energy on trying to elevate academic achievement within the district.
All right, great, thank you. Steve, do you want to move on to viewer and board questions?
Now, that was the second time this evening, folks. I think the caffeine could potentially be wearing off. So, Mr. Arnold, I'm going to move to, to you first. And, you know, the first question, because you've been sitting through these debates, you kind of know what they are going to be. So as we fast forward to September, and school is reopened, and, and we have no way of knowing what the pandemic is going to be doing, but it's probably going to be present in some way. What factors will you prioritize in making a decision between hybrid and in-person and remote learning?
What's, for, for, for us to provide to the fullest extent possible, the best platform for our students is in-person learning. That's been demonstrated across the board. Even though remote learning, there has been some learning gains amongst our students, it has been proven that those learning gains are not nearly as much as they would have been in person. However, it's going, for full in-person learning, it's going to be dictated by OHA and the Oregon Department of Education on what those metrics are. And I will, as a, as a board member, I push the envelope to the greatest extent possible, but for us to get to in-person learning, it's pretty much already dictated to us what those metrics are going to be.
Okay, thank you for the answer, and then I will move to Dr. White Bear. Same question.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Arnold on it's up to the state where we would be, like what kind of platform we would be in, what kind of delivery modality we would be able to do. But we need to be flexible as well, as we've seen this year in the spring with a fuller return to school. There's some families that can't go back, their students can't go back because of health reasons, and we need to keep that in consideration as well. So while it's kind of outside of the purview of the school board on the exact operations of the schools, I would definitely advocate for making sure that we had options for all students to be able to access education well and what works best for them.
Aside from the pandemic, and you've heard the question in the other races, if, if a lawmaker were to again propose a bill that would do away statewide with the religious and philosophical objections to vaccination for district students, assuming medical exemptions would of course still be honored, would you be supportive of that bill? I'll start with you, Dr. White Bear.
That's outside of our realm as school board members. I feel like this one is a personal question. Is that, can I ask for that clarification?
Well, you know, let me, let me state it a different way then, because I want to serve this listener if I can. If you're, if you're voting for a candidate, would you prefer that your, your state rep or your state senator supported such a law or not?
I don't know if that would be a deciding factor for me, honestly.
But what would you prefer?
For the, if, what their views are on the vaccine bill?
Yes.
I wouldn't want students to have the most access as possible to school. And if there's barriers that are created through legislation, that'd be kind of a little bit hard for me to, to support, but I wouldn't.
So you wouldn't be supportive of that? Okay, got it. Mr. Arnold?
For me, the, the way the question was, was crafted, which was religious and philosophical, I've never been supportive of philosophical reasons for.
Okay, what about religious?
Religious, I would not support, I, I, I would not support removing a religious exemption.
Okay, got it. And thank you both for being direct about your answer with that. Okay, then moving right along. Should the district, what, what should the district relationship be with police in the area? I'll ask you first, Mr. Arnold.
Throughout the course of my K through 12 education, starting in junior high, I've had school resource officers. I believe that they, if they're properly trained, if they have the, the proper mindset, I believe that they're very positive influence. I've seen it through, through, through the course of my career as a student, K through 12, and as a parent. So it really comes down to the quality of the training that the, the school resource officer would have within schools. And so long as, in everything that I've seen with my personal interactions with the school resource officer we have at CHS, I'd be fully supportive of that continuing.
Got it. Okay, Dr. White Bear?
The conversation with the school resource officers is really operational in nature. That's not something that the school boards decide, which I think is a positive thing, because it keeps that autonomy with the district administration, and that's where I'm at with that one.
Ms., Dr. White Bear, I'll go to you on this as a first answer for this next one. What are you hoping students learn from the BLM movement?
I'm hoping that students learn from Black Lives Matter movement that we need to face the continued oppression of certain groups of people in ways that don't mean that nobody else's lives matter. That's one of the things that often comes up is that it means that Black Lives Matter more. That's not what it means. It means that we need to address the systems that devalue Black Lives the most in, in order to help create positive change. That benefits all people, if you really think about it, because we're learning to treat each other with more humanity. We're learning from the past in ways that help us move forward. It's not a kind of be, be stuck in the past kind of message. It's to honor the lives that are being targeted the most, and it's honoring their voices and honoring the fact that there are systems in place that do oppress some people more than others. And in this case, we're talking about Black Lives, in particular, mostly Black men.
And your response, Mr. Arnold?
I completely agree with that. For me, the Black Lives Matter movement has meant that, you know, basically sitting back and looking more introspectively than I, than I've had to in the past. I've thought about, you know, the relationships that I, that I do have with persons of color within the community and in the workplace, and it's basically helped me see that maybe I would have not been as active a listener as I should have been. And so for me, it's, for me, it's listening, listening to the stories that are being told, listening to me to how, how they are felt within the community. And so for me, it's about building relationships, listening, and then as, as it's demonstrated that there are systems within the community that need to be restructured so that they are not serving as an obstacle to the persons of color within our community, then, then have them reconstructed so that they work for everyone.
And then let me confirm, Mr. Arnold, you are running aligned with Mr. US and Ms. LeCrum and Dr. Clary?
We are running aligned. That alignment only came about after the, the other four candidates decided to run as a slate. And so basically for us.
And then let me confirm with Dr. White Bear, you were running aligned with Mr. Adams, Mr. Al Abdurrahim, and Ms. Tominey?
That's correct, and it's also supported by the Friends of Corvallis Schools PAC, and so it's supported by community.
Okay, I'm going to move back to Mr. Arnold, and I'm gonna want to kind of head back to your voter's pamphlet statement where it says, "We must link educational outcomes to the district equity goals, to the district's equity goals and objectives." Currently, there is little meaningful data being provided to demonstrate the district's success or failure in improving educational equity. Could you just kind of, within around 30 seconds, just kind of illuminate a little bit your meaning there and what you're going to do about it if you're elected?
All right, Steve, I'll be honest. I don't know if I'm going to be able to put that into 30 seconds, but I'll give it a shot. Essentially, when you're looking at the school board, they, the metrics that they're using in their overarching strategic plan are just follow grade level, you know, everyone reading by grade level, by grade three, following algebra for grade nine, and then making sure they're on track to graduate after that. There's little, there's very little that's reported back from the district administration as to the, the efficacy of any of the equity programs that they have within the district, linking the students to supports outside of the district. How, are these students?
You know, what do you mean by equity, first of all?
When I, when I'm talking about equity, I'm talking about the, the reallocation of resources within the district to provide those students with the greatest need, more resources, so that they can achieve the same outcomes as their white peers within the community. Because primarily, the, the, the community within the Corvallis School District that is having the, the most difficulty meeting academic achievement are, are students of color. And so basically, what they've been doing is, not what they've been doing, but for equity to me, it's just those resources have been reallocated. What are we getting?
Now, now, how, how do you know that the students in this particular community of color are the most challenged academically right now? Do you have?
The assessment, the assessment scores that we're receiving from the Oregon Department of Education, they give them on a by-school and a by-district basis.
And is what you're seeking essentially that, okay, the district is doing these things about that, is it working? Is that, is that the kind of statistical breakdown you're looking for?
Exactly. They're, they're providing different programs within the district, but they're not providing any feedback as to aligning the outcomes of those programs with academic achievement. I mean, I was part of the first, I was part of the budget committee that passed the first attempt at an equitable budget where they reallocated resources within the district based on schools' need. Before that, they'd been providing every elementary school with the equal amount of dollars. 2014, they changed that budget model.
Were you supportive of that at the time?
I was very supportive at that time, but I raised. Now, Steve, let me finish if you don't mind.
That's okay.
I raised the same questions then that I'm raising now, which is, this is great. I agree, it needs to be done, but we also need to make sure that we're linking those additional investments into increased academic achievement.
Now, I'm going to move to the part of the question you're going to like. If you're elected, what are you going to do about it?
I'm going to require greater accountability from the district, or I'm going to be a voice for greater accountability on the district, because I'm just one voice. It would require the entire board to come forward and, and actually request that of the district or hold them accountable, but try and find them accountable, hold them accountable for the efficacy, the efficacy of those programs that they're providing and linking those to academic achievement. Because we're allocating more resources to schools such as Lincoln and Garfield. However, our, our Hispanic students within the district have, are struggling the most. Yes, on the standardized test, English language learners are going to have the most difficulty on that, and that goes without saying. But at the same time, there's been a decrease over the, over the past three years with, or actually, they've been, they plateaued over the past three years to where we're, they're, they're just not.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Arnold. I'm going to ask for Dr. White Bear's response.
Yeah, so if we think about how long the public education system has been around, it's been around for quite some time, a couple hundred years, right, and it's going to take much more than a couple of years for us to be able to see the results of equity work. We're talking about intervening systems that have been marginalizing students in very specific ways and have been used as a tool of assimilation in a lot of contexts. It's going to take much more than a couple of years, it's going to take more than five years for us to see those results. And so what we need is time. We need patience, and we need to understand that there's been models in other school districts that have worked well, that we can be doing here, and part of that has to do with the allocation of funding. I know that with the data sets, with the students of color, a lot of times at the state level, those numbers aren't even on there because they're asterisked out, which means there's a little star where their numbers are supposed to be for individual schools because of the way that data is reported. So we don't really actually have some of the numbers that were mentioned by school. And so we need to look at the, the ways that the individual schools are doing assessment to kind of get a deeper look into that, and I know that's being worked on currently. So that's, it's going to take time, and we can't measure it instantaneously.
Now, will you support some level of measurement?
There's measurement happening already. There's already.
Thank you. Got it. Okay, Dr. White Bear, I'm going to move over to your voter's pamphlet statement, which calls for budgeting in stronger support. You've used the word stronger, indicating you'd like to see more of this. Support of student mental health, food, shelter, and whole self. What budget changes would you advocate for if elected related to your concerns?
So that question is hard to answer without having the budget available. I don't know where those numbers are lying now. I would like to use the equity lens is what I meant with that statement. The way that equity is used is to see where the greatest needs are, and we know that strong mental health support helps students succeed better because they're able to concentrate better. We know that equity work being supported more strongly helps students concentrate because they're not being microaggressed or they're not receiving acts of, of racism in their daily experiences. It's really hard to concentrate on schoolwork if you're experiencing that. And so as long as we're using that equity lens in our budget decisions, I think we'll be doing okay. And so hopefully that helps clarify what I meant with that statement.
Okay, is there a specific program you're hoping to fund at some point?
Actually, there is, but it's not through our budget. It's a federally funded program that I've been advocating for a little while now, and I hope to continue to advocate.
What's the program?
It's called the Indian Education Program. It's a federally funded program that helps support specifically American Indian and Alaska Native students, which are actually the most institutionally unsupported students in our district.
So you're, you'd advocate for that program to, to get some legs here?
Yeah, and it's free, it's basically free money for the district. It's helping provide more support. That helps meet the goals of equity without touching the budget that's existing in the district.
Mr. Arnold, your response? Mr. Arnold, your response?
Well, currently, the, most of the mental health infrastructure within the school district is being funded by the Student Success Stat from, from the state. I had written a, an article, initially when the school district had announced that they were gonna be creating this infrastructure, I was against it because we hadn't received that funding yet, it's $1.6 million over three years, and that was back in 2018. Now that we've received that funding, right now, I'm fine with that. I think it's providing a, a lot of needed support, but I would like to, again, try and link that back in, are the students that are receiving that emotional, emotional and mental health support, are they, are they performing better in our schools, is it, is it going and having the desired effect? I'm a little concerned that if the Student Success Act money gets reduced in, in sometime in the future, how we're gonna make up for, for that because of the cost of the program within the district. But right now, since it's being funded through, through a separate means and not coming out of the general fund, I'm fully supportive of those measures.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold, and I want to thank both of you for participating in this evening's City Speak debate. I stated at all the other races, not easy to sit here, get grilled, have me kind of goading you to kind of hurry up. Not easy to do, it's not easy to run for these things, it's a volunteer position for crying out loud. Really appreciate you both participating. I do want to state by extension, we do have one candidate this evening that has, well, two, that declined to be here. Both Dr. Clary and Ginger LeCrum, Shadell LeCrum. So I appreciate the participant, participation this evening. Kara?
Thank you both, we're now going to be moving on to position one candidates. Those are incumbent school board chair Sammy Al Abdurabah and challenger Bryce Clary. As Steve mentioned, we will only be questioning Mr. Al Abdurabah, sorry about that, since Bryce Clary, Bryce Clary has declined to debate. So I'm gonna go to you, Mr. Al Abdurabah, what's motivating your choice to run and what are you hoping to accomplish if elected? Two minutes, please.
Thank you, Kara. First of all, thank you for having me, this is a great opportunity in elections and reelections. It's time for a community to hold us accountable and to celebrate the accomplishments that we have. The reason I'm running, I bring passion, vision, and experience. Let me talk about my experience and the work that I've done. We, as a community and as a school board and district, increased graduation rates to record high. We passed policies that are responsive for the needs of our students. And we are now a model for other communities in terms of protecting immigrant, undocumented community members and transgender and non-binary students. We bring voices together, advocate for students together, we pass resolutions that protect our students and make our education inclusive for all. My experience, I'm the Oregon School Board Member of Color Caucus President, and also I represent Corvallis and Board Members of Color in the Legislative Process and Advocacy in Oregon School Board Association. So we advocate together for better laws, better, better rules for us in Corvallis here. I bring the passion, I don't bring this alone, I work with the team. And I have the support and endorsement and working with the community that makes me very passionate about this work, but also able to bring community into the decision-making in the boardroom. I hope to achieve a lot, we want to continue upholding our past accomplishments, navigate the pandemic safely and effectively, and also work on some future accomplishments. And I'll talk about that briefly. Our past accomplishments, we passed a bond of $200 million with 67% approval rates. Right now, we're halfway there, and we are on time, under budget, we need to continue that with the leadership that we have. We're working on sustainability in our education operations, we care about the planet, we care about our community. We have solar panels, our students are talking about and learning about and leading the work on sustainability. We want to navigate the pandemic, and let me tell you what we're doing, we're doing a lot. We have a plan after plan after plan, and we implement it as soon as the conditions are there for that plan. We change as much as the pandemic is changing, and we're leading for a better future in the fall. And I'll talk a bit more about that if we have the time. But I wanna make sure that as we navigate the pandemic, every student should be safe, we're not out of the woods yet, and we wanna make sure every student gets the access to their individual learning needs, and they stay safe and well. And there is a better future. The education system hasn't been equitable for a very long time, not only during the pandemic. And so many students were left behind and away from accessing education. We wanna envision the new normal, where every student can build a future for themselves, and we help them, empower them, and we are their partners in making the future better. That's why I'm running for my reelection for Corvallis School Board Position One.
Great, thank you for answering that question, we're now going to move on to board and viewer questions from Steve.
Thank you, Kara. Sammy, Mr. Al Abdurabah, and I, I should just, I will let the audience know that we go back with Mr. Al Abdurabah somewhat. I do know him personally.
Hi, Steve, I just got my doctorate, it's very, very short time ago, but you can call me Sammy Al Abdurabah, Dr. Sammy, Dr. Al Abdurabah, whatever you like.
Given your last name, can I just call you Dr. Sammy?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So, you know, I just, I'm gonna buzz through these quick, you've had an opportunity to really listen to these. So I'm, I'm kind of waiting to hear your responses. Just knowing that September, that we can't know what's coming. What are you gonna prioritize in decision-making in terms of hybrid versus in-person versus remote learning opportunities for students wherever we are?
Yeah, as you mentioned, the fall is a little bit far away, but we have plans for it, and we're readopting the plans. I can tell you, we are going to continue on a few things. First of all, giving families predictability and consistency. They have been asking for predictability and consistency, and I'm so proud of our team working hard on predictability and consistency. I will work more on making communication and community engagements more frequent. Community members want to know what's going on and how we're planning, and how we're engaging teachers and students and family members and community groups in the decision-making. So that's very important. And to your question about the options, we want to make sure we provide our students with the options that work for them and for their families. I feel there is an opportunity in what, in what we are going through, which is reinventing education where an option like Corvallis Online could be there, where the ability, if there is a quarantine situation, not only from COVID, from any possible future pandemic, we have a system now to be able to get students the accessibility for temporary access to education that's appropriate and adequate.
So let me, Dr. Al Abdurabah, you know, there's been some discussion this evening about the constant schedule changes is, is very difficult, even coming from a place of privilege. How do you feel about that characterization?
I feel it's, it's, it's missing the picture. I, I'm privileged to really access the changes in schedules across the state. I've seen families stream, like do live streaming and say, "I was expecting my kid to go tomorrow to school, and now you're telling me they're not going to school in person because there was a decision that we're changing last minute?" We don't do that here, we get people two weeks, at least two weeks, and now actually we get three weeks in advance. And by we, the district have been really working hard to give heads up for the families. You have two weeks to plan, we have three weeks to plan, so we make sure that they have predictability to the schedule.
Now, your opponent has-
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, go on.
It's something, it, it's not ideal, I wanna just be very clear, I wish this is not happening. But it is happening where there are changes in the schedule, and they will happen, and we need to pivot from time to time because the virus is changing, and the conditions around us, and the status of how the university community might be impacting the outbreaks, all of that is a situation we need to be mindful of and responsive of. So I want to really highlight something important, this is not ideal, it's not going to be ideal for any family, but it will be the best option that we can provide for all families.
Your opponent on social media has characterized the district as, to some extent at times, feeling him to be panicked, and is concerned that there could be a spike, for instance, in the future, and that the district would respond not to the science, but just become panicked. Do you believe that's a fair characterization? If not, why not?
Yeah, very unfair characterization, to be honest, because we do have plans, and there are protocols, and the school districts is working with public health officials, and is working with Oregon Department of Education mandates and requirements that we have to work with them. And we're prioritizing the community's safety and health. I never saw panic in our leadership, I see a panic leader when I meet one, and I haven't seen it in our school districts, I'll let me tell you. They are very steady, measured, and prioritize the safety of the students. In case there is a need for quarantining, because there's infection and exposure, we have to follow the rules, number one, which is we need to track, trace, and quarantine, and tests, and all of that is happening in a private way, and all of these plans are there, has been there for a while now, and we are publicly saying how many cases, you have a dashboard where you can see now if there are any cases. So I would say it's, it's really unfair and uninformed characterization.
Aside from the pandemic, there have been at times bills proposed in sale that would take away the philosophical or religious exemption for vaccination for schoolchildren. It would just simply be restricted to medical exemptions. Would you be supportive of that sort of legislation or not?
Steve, I know you're asking yes or no question, and I'm going to give you a very clear and straightforward answer, okay? Vaccines, especially COVID vaccines, have saved lives, are saving lives, and will save lives. And will be the only way to reach herd immunity when we vaccinate 80% or maybe more, and that will include kids whenever there's a vaccine that's available for kids. And to give all children access to public education without risking their lives and everyone's lives, we need to ask ourselves a question. We are in the 21st century, and the best invention, to my knowledge, in the 20th century that saved so many lives is vaccination. I feel there have to be some education and public discussion toward that. I am not Senator Geltzer or Representative Ray Field, however, I know that they have their opinions about it. Personally, my opinion is that COVID vaccine have saved lives, we need to discuss that philosophically.
Yes or no, would you support, would you find yourself supportive of that sort of legislation?
To be really honest, I want to engage everybody in Corvallis School District or in the district that represents my senator and representative in order to support such legislation, but I wanna be very clear, the education comes before enforcement.
So you would find yourself supportive, but only after a certain amount of public education?
Let me tell you this, it saves lives, and I feel I am very supportive of it right now, but I feel it's not gonna pass unless we have education and a buy-in. I wanna, yeah, I wanna be very clear, anti-vaccination is against saving lives, and I want to be very candid with anyone who believes that's wrong. I, I wanna say my values here, I think vaccination saves lives, it's a philosophical decision to save lives.
Thank you, Dr. Al Abdurabah. Then my next question will be, aside from that, trans girls and boys playing on teams, yes, no?
So, again, there is no yes and no in this, because there are some details I wanna discuss with you.
Good.
There is a very clear statement we want to make here, and we have made it. Our trans girl, trans boys, non-binary students should have and will have access to education and to sports activities in a way that's equitable and equal for them. We need to honor that. And honoring that is not a political statement, it is a moral statement that we want to stand up for our students. It's a statement that, again, saves lives, so many murders and suicides happen because of that. So, going from that moral value and moral standard, OSAA in Oregon nationally are engaging in those discussions. And parts of my leadership position in the Oregon School Board Members of Color Caucus, we have advocated for more inclusive rules, including attachments to the hair culturally or religious headscarves, and how that has been not fair for our students, especially Black and Muslim students. I will continue that work by advocating for our trans and non-binary students to have excessive, access, equal access to this. And I will continue on my path, which is, when we passed our policy on transgender and non-binary students, we did not say, "Here's the policy and let's do it." No, we went to community members, there was a rally about trans students' rights, and I was there, our trans folks' rights in, in Benton County, and I went there and I talked to community members there, told them, "Come to the boardroom, testify if you would like, or talk to someone who you feel you're confident with, so we can make a better policy." So, Steve, Steve, I, I really like the question of yes or no, and the way is, yes for supporting our students, yes for listening for our students, yes for empowering our students to create the rules that serves them best.
Okay, and then what relationship, if any, would, should you, do you believe the police should have with schools, schools have with police, rather?
Yeah, I feel several of my colleagues qualified the relationship correctly. We do have a really strong relationship, Ryan, Superintendent Ryan Noss and Chief Harley have a strong relationship and on hot dial, and they're working together collaboratively, and of course, as well with the new sheriff, Van Arzadal. And because of that, we are working on what works best for the students. Now, there is some discussion happening across the, across the states, and including here, it's happened already, where we talked about what would make it better for our students to feel safe, all of them, and make sure everybody is safe. And I've been attending some drills and activities and exercises, asking questions. And as an oversight position, I feel our law enforcement agencies and our school districts are basically two hands of one body, protecting our students and making them feel safe. And as an operational decision, I trust our leadership and our chief and sheriff to do what's best for our students.
Okay, and then I'll ask you the same way that I asked another one of the races. Career Day, can, would you say that law enforcement should be at a career day in uniformed or not?
So, Steve, here, here's the challenge, okay? I don't wanna bring my predisposed ideas about what the uniform means, or concealed weapon mean, or all of these things, or how should we do it. What I bring, and what we brought, actually, we already went through this, this discussion that you're asking me already happened between the leaderships of the districts. What we did as a school board, and I would reference Director Adams' answer, was we said, here's expectation, safety, equity, and making sure all of our students are safe, no exception. And understanding the cultural perspectives of that, you have some folks who experienced, experienced, or their families experienced traumatic events in their lives because of policing, and we understand that. So with that expectation, now we leave the details and we empower our leadership to work on the details. Just like I'm not the expert in curriculum development, or in specifics of how to teach something specific in a classroom, we set an expectation for the curriculum.
Does current policy translate that, for instance, a high school principal could decide, sheriff's department wants to be here in uniform, therefore they can be?
Well, yes, so the idea is basically if there is a need for a life-saving event, of course, the law enforcement officers will-
I'm talking about a career development day.
Again, you're going into details, I would, I would refer you to Superintendent Noss and talk about how a career development day will happen. And I am aware of what happened in Albany, and I've talked with my colleagues, Board Members of Color across the state on what's happening in Albany, let me be-
Well, what was your personal view of that?
It's, it's disheartening, because both their superintendents and police chief told the community, "This is not about politics. This is not about are you pro-police or against police, are you pro-children or against children? It's about making all the children, including those who have been traumatized in the past, feel safe in career day." And as, as you heard from community members, law enforcement is important, and also historically and currently, law enforcement discussion is now evolving in a way that we want to make sure it protects everybody. And Black, Indigenous, and folks of color have experienced disparities across the nation, and we want to be acknowledging that. So with that in mind, I wanna say what's happening in Albany is disheartening, because they're making it politics, where it's what happened was, what's best for the kids? Some kids felt traumatized, the most informed thing is to make sure that, that trauma goes away, and one day, they, we will fix that. One day, we will be able to envision a world where our children don't get traumatized by a specific uniform. So, again, I, I feel, I feel when we ask ourselves this question, what's best for the children? When you ask this, this question, what's best for the children, and go from there.
Would it be fair to characterize your position as, for the moment, you would want to engage the community of students, parents, administrators, and then over time, the hope would be that society is in a space, students are in a space where police could be- students are in a space where police could be welcomed on campus without there being any fear because society's is has evolved.
Yeah, Steve, I would say it's not about society. I'll be frank with you. Drug policing, and I'm not sure where is it and which district it is happening, but drug policing is a matter and it's happening. And and we want to make sure that protecting students is different than targeting students of color and maybe coming.
I guess what I'm really hoping, what I'm really asking is, are you hoping at some point that police would in fact find themselves well, welcome on campus?
I would say it's a responsibility for everybody to make sure that happens.
Good, got it. Okay. And then next question. Of the candidates running, you are, I just want to confirm what I believe I already know. You are aligned with Vince Adams and LaHuli White Bear and and Shawna Tomine.
So since you said what you already know, I'm going to add to it. I had some insights that you might not highlight it today, Steve. The answer is yes, but let me add to it that my colleague mentioned, we are publicly endorsing each other and I endorse them in the voter pamphlet. So very clear about that for their expertise and service into the community. But I would add one more thing. We are the only ones in our race supported by the Friends of Corvallis Schools, which is a group, a growing group of parents and teachers, including the teachers' union and also including the OSTA Chapter Two, which is the classified employees and so many elected officials. We're the only ones that bring that perspective and there's an important message there. When you have a school board, it's not about a specific person who can do everything, even as a chair. I don't do work alone. We do it together and we bring community members, including those associations, parents, teachers, other elected officials, so we can advocate for our district better. And that's why I would say yes, we are, I am endorsing Dr. LaHuli White Bear and Dr. Shawna Tomine and Director Vince Adams because they bring community and we all are going to bring the best decisions for our students.
Thank you, Sammy. I want to move now to your opponent's voter pamphlet statement, which says, I am asking anyone who cares more about kids than politics to honor me with your vote. Do you have a sense of what politics he's referring to?
I don't know really because I understand the volunteering role of the school board as public policy, where you work for what's policies are best for the children.
It is a political, by definition, it is a political position.
Yes, it is. And if there's any confusion about that, we need to be very clear. It is a public office and we're running for public office, even if someone has the confusion about that.
Right. I mean, I'm just saying this is basic government 101 junior high. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know if there was implicit message there, Steve, but what's best for the kids? That's how, what I've been saying since I joined the school district, the school board. That should be our decision-making tool and I hope I feel it's unfortunate that we can't really debate here or discuss and contrast our ideas. I understand my opponent's actually is actively campaigning on the ground and I feel it's unfortunate for the community not to see where the differences are.
Now, he has, I think, in social media, to some extent, defined a little bit what he may mean by that as some of the folks that have, that are currently on the board, including yourself, have run for other offices at times, speaking now of county commission. And in your instance, also House 16. Do you think that the the idea that folks that are on the school board might find that, you know, themselves wanting to run for public office in the future, should that in some way preclude folks from wanting those people on the school board?
Of course not, because if that's the case, you will not have our state senator, you will not have our two judges in the county, you will not have one of the county commissioners, Commissioner Anshister. The reason why someone goes to the school board is to serve all the kids. And you get to realize that's a point of time where are there options that you can serve the kids as well. So county commissioners provide mental health and support for our students and the community at large. Representative Dan Rayfield, by the way, who is an endorser and a former opponent, and I think that's a badge of honor I bring. He's been working tirelessly to help our students and our community and advance fair elections in the state.
And that's after the two of you had different views on 97 and to some extent, you know, hotly so. Okay, then I'm going to ask the question that you probably know I'm setting you up for. Are you committed to serving your full four-year term if elected?
Definitely. Until there is something happens, but yes, I'm running for four years elections, so I can continue for four years until.
Do you have your eye on future office?
One day maybe. Right now, it's school board. As long as I can serve better and in the school board, I will continue to do that. And I feel I'm giving the better option for the community to do that. So that's why I'm running for reelection. There is way much more work to be done. And I feel like I can't wait until I go tomorrow to our budget meeting and the following Thursday for some really important work. So every day I'm going, I'm waking up and say, what can we do better for the students? And I feel four years is just just not more than enough. It's just, just enough to do the work and let me.
Now, you say until something happens, say, what would, would something happen where you would decide to leave your term halfway through to run for higher office?
I don't know. It depends, I would say. I'll be very frank. I don't know. I did try to run for office before because I saw there is an opportunity where I can provide something and right now I'm providing something unique for the school district. Let me tell you what's, I think, in the four years and I want to commit for the four years. And probably that addresses some confusions. One of the candidates mentioned about metrics and data. Graduation rate in four years, I'm hoping will be 95%. And I don't have a crystal ball, but we have graduation rate. Sorry, on track for graduation for ninth grade and it's 95%. So if you are a freshman right now and you're on track, that's 95% of our students. In four years, if we just continue doing what we do, not increase our work, we're going to go for 95%. So that's where I see myself in four years, where I will be shaking hands with 95% of our seniors. And that is what's my focus, Steve. If there is another office that will be there, I'll be really examining hardly. Can I make sure that our district will have 95% at least 95% of its graduates in 2025? If that's the case, then yes, I'll be happy to move on. But until then, until that happens, I'm committed to reach that. There's so much work to be done. And by the way, let me just, Steve, say something very important. Maybe that's not politically correct. Persons of color and honestly, frankly, also women, usually when they step up for office, they're called ambitious. And it's okay to be ambitious as long as you want to serve for the right reasons.
Okay, thank you. And also in short, you're not precluding that you would leave your term early if need be, but you don't really foresee that?
I don't. I'm running, I'm running for a very clear purpose, four years term.
Thank you. So, Dr. Al Abdurabah, I think that I've probably been a little bit tougher on you than usual because your opponent is not here. And in full disclosure that the advocate has endorsed you for prior, prior offices. So I've probably been a little bit unusually tough on you. I very much appreciate your showing up here. I think you probably knew, knowing me, that I was going to be tougher on you because of these things. So we know each other. So you probably knew I was going to be a little tougher on you. So I appreciate your sitting for this. I want to thank all of the candidates this evening. I want to remind viewers that these are volunteer positions that these folks are running for. And I got to tell you, dealing with elected officials for a lot of years, man, I tell you, the thank you notes, you might get them now and again when somebody appreciates what you've done, but generally you get a note from people when they're not happy with you. So they tend to outweigh or they tend to outnumber rather the thank yous that you get. So these folks work tirelessly. They generally have to work other jobs to support themselves. And they're putting in lord knows how many hours in a serious endeavor. And then they volunteer to show up this evening to get grilled by the likes of Ms. Nixon and myself while we give you questions, sometimes hostile from the public as well. And yet here you are, and I appreciate that you are taking part in the democratic process of this community in a way that you have. Thank you all. Ms. Nixon.
Again, thank you to all of our candidates for participating in this evening City Speak debate. And we also appreciate Commissioner Ogro and Sheriff Van Arzadal's participation earlier. And we want to thank the Corvallis Advocate staff for doing all the work behind the scenes that make these events possible. We also want to thank our supporters, Peak Sports and First Alternative Natural Foods Co-op. And of course, thank you to everybody who tuned in tonight.